Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Madam President, were you looking to support a 15% tax levy increase for the budget for next year? Can you explain or have your business administrator please explain this tax hike while you are approving monthly legal bills that will total over $6 million by the end of this year? I am going to spend approximately $300 more in taxes due to the board's budget, but the board has a $6.5 million line item for discretionary funding in the budget. Madam President, you said you were wanting only modesty and transparency, but that is what you're expecting from me. Who can tell me what the $6.5 million for discretionary funding will be spent on? Thank you for your time.
The next person is John Luppi.
Madam President and commissioners, my name is John Luppi. I am a proud social studies teacher at School 18, Robert Morris, also director of communications with Elizabeth Education Association. I want to thank Dr. Green and David Chiara for laying out the cause and the allocations for this budget and the reasons and the amount of the tax levy that is being proposed. I also want to thank Superintendent Yubemeyer for a wonderful presentation, which I listened to from beginning to end. I now can go out to my colleagues tomorrow and to tell them that our needs are going to be met next year under this budget in the best way possible. I thank you all, and I just want to ask that we put politics aside and support this budget. It's late. Thank you. It's late. I look forward to serving our children tomorrow, early in the morning, so let's get some sleep. Thank you.
The next person is Laura Rico.
Good evening, everybody. Since you have approved a budget that will raise my taxes by approximately $300 if not more, I need to know why $3.2 million has been allocated for stipends. Who can identify those stipends? Especially if you are eliminating extended day. Are the stipends for teachers? Can someone tell me which school staff receives the greatest amount of stipend money? The budget shows $2, $3 million for 36 teachers. Madam President, since you have visited many of the schools, can you tell me which of the schools can accommodate 36 more teachers? New teachers means new classrooms. Where are the $6 million in funds for legal fees in the budget? These questions impact all of us parents. Who can provide this information? Also, I would like to say and address an issue that has come to my attention in recent weeks, this being the issue of the ability of Madam President to oversee and manage large budget, such as the size of Elizabeth Board of Education. My concern is Madam President has had three foreclosures to her name. On one, May 6, 2005. On another, August 16, 2005.
You can't come here and publicly attack the board president. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You were talking to me too. You're coming here and publicly attacking me. But personal finance is way out of it. It's not more of a public speaking. I'm sorry. I am sorry. I'm not being a model of integrity. The ground rules are here. We have rules. Madam President, please forward. At this point, we would ask you to return to discussing budget-related matters.
That is absolutely about the budget.
The ground rules have been laid out before.
It is absolutely about the budget.
I think that you hear tremendously from the comments and the intention of what the issue is.
It's absolutely about the budget. How is it not about the budget? She can't finance her own life.
No, that has nothing to do with the presentation. What is important more this evening?
Budget for my children's education?
I also think that you're going beyond your time here at this point.
Now, yes, because he interrupted. Other people can speak and go on and on and on, and nobody gets interrupted. Come on. I come up here to speak about something, and I get interrupted, and then my time gets cut off? That's not fair.
I was trying to pull your proposition.
Yeah, try a little bit. Just try.
Taxpayers, people that pay.
I'm going to remind you again that this is a public hearing on the budget. Presentation is dealt with the budget, and your comments are supposed to be related to the budget, not personal comments.
My comments weren't finished. My comments weren't finished. I thought of you several minutes ago.
I remind the audience that that is how this meeting will be conducted, and your talk is such a valid thing. So I would rather that quickly and make whatever comment you have to make about the budget at this point.
About the budget, but he interrupted. May I continue now?
Agreed, madam.
Thank you. I know we were often hard in times in our lives. Those three foreclosures in one year clearly showed reckless behavior, reckless behavior with money, and I for one do not want to see our kids' lives recklessly handled, recklessly watched, and to do with the budget. I would ask that all board members consider this when Madam President.
I sit here and allow people to come up on this microphone and rewrite the rules for your members, okay? Personally, and I, board members, that isn't what we do here. I'm sorry. We cannot allow it to happen, okay? This isn't allowed anywhere else.
Next person is Christina Moray.
Before I get started, I would just like to say this week began with Teacher Appreciation Week. Our group, Elizabeth Parents and Students Care, would like to applaud all the dedicated teachers in this district, most of whom go above and beyond what they are required to do. We believe that you are the best teachers for our children, not iPads, not computers. We stand by you. We support you. We will fight with you to make sure all children in this district have the same opportunities to succeed. I thank you for engaging our children. I truly hope that our district spends less time on computers at schools and more on communications with teachers and our children. They are not guinea pigs for data collection. I would like to address another issue with the budget. This concerns school trips. Children look forward to going out of the classroom, especially after the bombardment of tests that happened in this district. Part, math, SGOs, benchmarks, teacher-made tests, SATs, advanced placement, international baccalaureates, advanced international certificates of education. Yet, we have children who can't go on trips because their parents can't afford to pay the costs. Many parents in this district have more than one child, which can double or triple the cost of trips. So why, while some children get to go, others are left behind as a reminder that their parents could not afford to send them on Board of Education, or the Board of Education has decided to cut funds for trips? Not that they didn't deserve to go. I thought all men all in Elizabeth. This is where we should be allocating money, spend on banners. You want to praise our children for a job well done? Send them on a trip. Throw them an end-of-the-year party. Don't hang a banner to tout their accomplishments. This leads me to the issue of the banners hanging at our high schools stating that it is the number-one, most challenging school in New Jersey. I would like to clarify to the general public what this means, as I think the banner is misleading. Elizabeth High School in name consists of upper and lower academy only. Hamilton came in at number 25. I'm not sure where Jefferson, Edison, Dwyer, and Halsey ranked. To be included, schools had to have an average SAT score below 2,000, an average ACT score of below 29. Generally, institutes with concentrations of high-performing students were omitted from this. The paper rated America's most challenging high schools by dividing the number of testings given each year by the number of seniors who graduated. So let me clarify, the survey was not designed to consider whether or not the students passed the advanced exams. They decided not to count passing rates in this way because they found that many high schools kept those rates artificially high by allowing only top students to take the courses. They found...
Next person is Maria Logos.
Good morning. I would like to address the budget while reviewing it some interesting points. At the last board meeting, a little over $260,000 was carried over from 2013 to 2014. There was no clear explanation of how this money can be used, simply that it was being carried over. Perhaps the superintendent can elaborate on where those idea funds are going. Programs that were listed under special ed category include three literacy programs, two math programs, of which one is only specific to a particular school. Rethink by the Uncommon Fund, which is a general raise based on need behaviors objectives and for those parents who are strong enough to ask for a functional behavioral assessment, might get their child award certified in behavioral analyst to set up a framework that will only be set up in that case path. In addition, special needs parents are not told that they can enroll their children in any summer program, not just ESY, perhaps because all those supports would need to be provided. There is also the issue of the hiring of 36 teachers, of which only one is special ed. Not understanding why, consider the following points. Your justification for hiring one teacher is going to make an impact on the student population, class size, and address the needs of all special ed population? Since one in 68 kids is diagnosed with autism, and the levels of classification increase every year exponentially, we fail to see how an estimated 2% is what is estimated for special needs enrollment. Yes, sending special needs children out of districts has increased to 23% as an estimate. This tells me that Elizabeth District, despite federal funds, is estimating that it will not meet state targets yet again, and that it does not have the support in place for special needs children. In the handouts that you were just providing on the first page, references data on the history of autism in our schools as per the last board meeting. While I think it's hard to believe that we're experiencing a decrease in autism when one in every 68 kids is diagnosed, and that in the last four years, the total percentage stayed almost even for two years, dropped last year and showed an increase this year. Autism dropped from 4% to 18%. The information was what was presented by the Special Services Division at the last board meeting. That's how that first page is compiled. The rest of that information is obtained from the New Jersey Department of Education website under special ed data. But what was presented is how data indicates that the district does not provide for inclusion or route of placement students in general ed studies for less than 40% of the time, depriving them of the right to be educated along typical peers. What was not discussed is how this district plans to take corrective action regarding the noncompliance of the least restrictive environment as per the laws in STEM, and what supports are in place to maintain a level of compliance that has not been achieved. Comprehensive data and statistics are not sent to the parents to understand what percentage of progress is being made and in what areas a simple partial proficient or mastered is. What is received in relation to the goals? Why can we not utilize aid to discriminate this information?
Thank you, Ms. Logos.
Come on, Zanella, finish this off, Mama.
Zanella, talk.
Good evening. Core curriculum is not shared with the parents when requesting its case manager. One told me that if it was given to me, then the teacher will be out of work. Social skills instruction should be modeled with typical developing tiers, which is often not implemented in speech therapy sessions. Your presentation lacks communication with parents. Evidence of this after speaking with several special ed parents, no one has access to power school or even been informed. I guess I have to be a parent of a typical child to know this. I do not know what is meant by a community education program. However, if it is anything like your policy on community relation, it will lead much to be desired. I am happy to see that a new IEP system will replace the current one. I hope that this new system will reduce or at least flat when a case manager copies and pastes one child's narrative into an IEP that belongs to a different child. I have also noticed that there has been zero money allocated to adult education in the past two years. You have gone from $98,346 to zero. Why? No monies have been earned marked to fix air conditioning in particular schools such as School 6. We have classroom dividers and can spend $625,000 and teach to one initiative, but both cannot provide a safe and conducive place to learn. Legal fees per pupil, 2014 to 2015, original budget was $73, but the revised budget shows how it was actually doubled. I ask if the current proposed budget is not understanding the cost. Since we are on the topic, why has there not been a legal reserve in four years? I want to know where the money to pay the attorneys is coming from. Is there a discretionary account or some type of surplus fund from which attorneys are being paid from? These are all valid and important questions that should be considered and answered before deciding on this budget. Thank you.
The next person is Rosa Carrillo.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, administration staff, Elizabeth education members, parents, and members of the Elizabeth community. My name is Rosa Carrillo, and I am president of Elizabeth Education Association. I would also like to add that I am a resident of Elizabeth, and I am a product of Elizabeth schools. I attended School 1, Hamilton, and Baton Rouge, all pros. So having said that, I have addressed this board and city council during the last several weeks on behalf of my members and supported the proposed school budget for 2015 and 2016 school year. I stand proud before you this evening to reaffirm that support. I stand proud before you because our students are doing great things in our schools thanks to the hard work of each and every member I represent and thanks to the hard work and dedication by Elizabeth Board of Education. I believe wholeheartedly in the power of collaboration, and we have seen the successful product of our efforts in each of the schools in our great city. As a testimony to this hard work and achievement, the Elizabeth Education Association launched an unprecedented positive school PR campaign throughout social media, on television, and messaging throughout the city to highlight and celebrate what we have all worked very hard to build over the years and what we are so proud of. I am proud of the contributions made by each EEA member, and I am proud of what we have been able to accomplish together. To that end, it is incumbent upon this Board of Education to provide the appropriate staffing programs and the resources to keep Elizabeth schools on top throughout the state of New Jersey and throughout the nation, as our superintendent, Alfa Yubemeyer, has illustrated this evening. Excellent teachers bring great value to the city, but they do cost money. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I implore you to vote in favor of this budget. A yes vote is the right thing for our students, for our schools, for our members, and the city. Thank you.
The next person is Joe Cortijo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I must commend Superintendent Yubemeyer for the outstanding presentation that you've been here this evening. I think you have educated a lot of people what it takes to run a school system. And commissioners sitting up there, you very likely have a superintendent of that caliber because they make your job easy. I was also very glad, I was glad to see David here because David really gave us another oversight of what takes place in the state of New Jersey and the politics and the budgeting that takes place. I firmly believe that they should make a presentation to our city council, and I think we should work together, city council, to let them know what really entails running a Board of Education and where the funds are being dispersed. Having said that, I'm very proud to hear the parents speak out here because the parents want the best for their children. People here are actually saying, "Give me more. Give me more." But let me tell you something. Equity in excellence comes with a strong budget. If we don't have a strong budget, we can't get you more than we have now. Our children need more. Our children need compassion. Our children need more of a learning environment. They deserve it. They deserve it. We've made great progress, but we can't stop now because of a budget. It's like taking cops off the street or firemen off the fire station, or eliminating the N.P.S., if we want to do that. I live in Elizabeth. I don't want to give up my services. I want my fire department, where great people and do great jobs. I want the police department, but I want a strong education system for my children. So ladies and gentlemen, we have a tough decision to make. I'm asking you board members to follow and respect the superintendent's budget. That's your job. That's what we voted you in for, to continue the education of our children in the city of Elizabeth.
Any more of the board members?
I would like to take this opportunity to answer some of the questions that were posed this evening. I believe the first question Stephanie Mancalas had asked with regard to what is in the $6.5 million for discretionary funds? So I'm going to go back to the presentation, the background. Discretionary funds are essentially discretionary budgets. So what is inside that number are all of your instructional materials, all of your textbooks, all of your supplies. That is the basis of the school's budget and refer to that as discretionary funds. So it is an accounting for necessary instructional materials and supplies in support of our schools. With regard to, I believe, Laura Abrego, there was a question with regard to the $3.2 million referred to as stipends. I had presented one of the slides in listing of stipends and provided some examples. Stipends are used to fund the necessary after-school programs, our summer programs, that is outside of the teachers' contracts. All of the hours that are worked in support of these programs are paid through hourly stipends. It is also supporting our teachers through breakfast programs, the lunch programs that they were taking the children off the bus in the morning, having the children board the buses in the afternoon, and providing that monitoring and oversight that we pay for that on an hourly rate to support that service. In addition to opening our schools, I had talked about that extensively, so we provide our schools 30 hours, and the principal determines which of these staff members is going to be able to support them in opening their schools successfully. So for the hourly rate, they are paid stipends. Those are just some of the examples. The list goes on. For our medically fragile children that require the nurses to accompany them on field trips once it goes outside of the contractual time, because the field trip may be longer than the school day, that nurse pays a stipend to accompany that child. So that's an example of the stipends. Now, with regards to 36 new teachers, I can provide this slide that indicated each of the schools that would be supported with the additional teachers. So if you recall, I had talked about the number of new advanced bilingual classrooms that we were opening. I went through the extensive list of ESL teachers at the high schools, English teachers, biology teachers, engineering teachers. So that information is on our website. If you'd like that detailed list, we can include that as well on the website. I'll add that, certainly. With regard to the cost for school trips, so that is an area where we have the fixed amount for each of the schools. If the school exceeds the number of field trips that are funded, then they turn to largely fundraising activities to be able to cover the costs for the transportation. And there are times in which we exceed what's been budgeted, it turns into a cost to the parents, but I do want to thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Can I ask, what is the number of trips allocated per school? You're saying when it exceeds the number of trips?
I cannot, I do not know what the individual number is, but we certainly will share with you.
That's why the teachers are telling me that they're not getting trips.
There is funding needed.
No, it hasn't had a trip yet, and it's already...
I think the budget for the district, making sure you, there is money that's allocated. But as I'm trying to explain, when it exceeds the amount, I'd be happy to provide you with further information since I have your meeting. As I stated before, when it exceeds a certain amount, it's turned to fundraising events to be able to provide additional trips to the students.
I'd ask for a little bit of transparency as to what that amount is. If you can send that to me, I'd appreciate it. What is the amount of trips determined per school that children are allowed?
We do understand the focus is on teaching and learning, and the teaching and learning that occurs in our schools, correct? With regard to the challenges that we have been experiencing over the past two years and significant reductions in our budgets, I prioritize teaching and learning in classrooms. There is a budget that's provided to our schools for field trips. My priority is the instruction that's taken place in our classrooms. I will certainly share with you that amount that I have been focusing on is occurring in our core areas. With regard to autism, we have increased the number of classrooms over the past five years. If you look at the number of autism classrooms five years ago in comparison now, there is definite evidence that we are responding to the need. All of the children that his parents meet with us and express what the cost of disability may be, are supported by whether it's in class support or it's self-continuing setting. That is a firm commitment that we have to all of our students to provide the appropriate supports. So I certainly thank you for the data, and certainly will share that with my folks from special needs.
That's just for autism self-continuing, correct? That increases have happened?
We have, yes. Over the past five years, we've expanded our resources and classrooms in the district under the leadership of Dr. McMonlon. Thank you.
Would you care to address the loser?
Yes, please, thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Yubemeyer, I want to thank you for your presentation this evening, to David Chiara, who's been a true advocate, the advocate of school districts here in the state of New Jersey for many, many years. I think because of him, we have a great deal of success because of Mr. Chiara. I want to thank you for his presentation tonight. Certainly want to thank the EEA presidents, the president, Ms. Rosa Carrillo, Joe Cortijo, and certainly want to thank again all the staff and all the parents and everyone who took time out tonight from their busy schedules to be here. I think it's important to have, you know, open and frank discussions, especially with our school system. Our pledge of ethics, inspire others by celebrating successes and learning from our mistakes. Let's start with that. We certainly know that we have learned a great deal from our mistakes in the past. Elizabeth School District, not too long ago, probably in the last 15 years, was one of the worst public school districts in the state of New Jersey, 497th ranking. Certainly, as a city councilman, I served on Elizabeth City Council. One of the biggest problems we faced was how many people were moving out of the city of Elizabeth because of the minute they said they were not sending my kids to the public school system, didn't want to send them to the high school. So we lost many, many really good families, hard-working families, who were leaving the city because of the school systems not paying up the part. My parents, like many of your parents, are enemies to this country, okay? And I think we all understand that many of our parents, like many of the parents here today, that come from all over the world, come for that opportunity to give their children a better chance. So we know the past mistakes we've made... to David Chiara, who's been a true advocate of the advocate of school districts here in the state of New Jersey for many, many years. And I think because of that, we have a great deal of success because of Mr. Chiara. I want to thank him for his presence here tonight. Certainly want to thank the E E A president, the president, Mr. Rose Corredon, Joe Cortijo. And certainly I want to thank again all the staff and all the parents and everyone who took time out tonight from their busy schedules to be here. I think it's important to have, you know, open and frank discussions, especially with our school system. Our pledge of ethics, inspire others by celebrating successes and learning from our mistakes. Let's start with that. We certainly know that we have learned a great deal from our mistakes in the past. Elizabeth School District, not too long ago, probably in the last 15 years, was one of the worst public school districts in the state of New Jersey. 497th ranking. Certainly, as a city councilman, I served on Elizabeth City Council. One of the biggest problems we faced was how many people were moving out of the city of Elizabeth because of the minute they said they were not sending my kids to the public school system, didn't want to send them to the high school. So we lost many, many really good families, hardworking families, who were leaving the city because of the school systems not paying up the part. My parents, like many of your parents, are immigrants to this country. Okay? And I think we all understand that many of our parents, like many of the parents here today, that come from all over the world, come for that opportunity to give their children a better chance. So we know the past mistakes we've made and we know the transformation that took place in these past 10 years. So let's talk about some of the successes in our school district. There are in this room here tonight, Mr. George Meekl, Hamilton Academy, Mr. Ojeda, phenomenal job over at Jefferson, Ms. Argul, leading our top band, the music department, you know, Trace Montel with the art, and all these other wonderful principals. I see Mrs. Haskala, School One, School Nine, doing an incredible job. Now that's School One has been broken up into these two great academies. And so many, and all of you that are here tonight are part of that success. James Niko Thomas, back in at School Four, and Jen Campell. So many of you have worked so hard and continue to work so hard to make this school district number one. Now, we're going to have our disagreements. We're not always going to agree and we're not the purpose school district. We understand that. We're still only the number one purpose school district in the state. And we know we want to change that to be number one in the country, public school district. And it's going to take a lot of, it's going to take a lot of pain. This budget, certainly not an easy budget, no budget ever is, no budget at all ever is. We have to live within our constraints and sometimes we have to do more with less. And like I said before, I served on both sides of this aisle. Served on City Council for eight years and now I serve on Elizabeth Board of Education for so many years. So I've got to see both sides. And what's interesting, whether we agree or disagree, the city of Elizabeth Board of Education is doing a lot with less. 25 cents for every dollar that goes into your property tax here in the cities is going to public education. Throughout the state of New Jersey, it's almost double that number. Most cities collect, half of almost their property taxes go into public education. We're very, very fortunate that we do so much more of us and all this is happening, all these incredible successes. Think about it, we're the number one high school in the state of New Jersey. We're the top of the Northeast. We have Hamilton Academy, which is right up there behind, right behind that. See remarkable transformation happening up in all the other high schools, Jefferson Academy, Mr. Ojeda. We're not trying to leave any high school behind or not paying attention to any middle school. We're focused on all the schools. And as everybody says, all the schools. We did have to School One. We're not interested in just being like they said, well, high school doing better. We're a team. And I think that's what I've experienced in my years here in the city of Elizabeth Board of Education. Visiting the schools that I have, the pleasure of doing the last two years, visiting the schools, walking in and feeling and experiencing that energy. And energy is a contagious thing. Whether it's great energy, good energy, it's a positive thing. I saw when we had this thing over at School Seven and certainly Elizabeth National at 29, they know what I'm talking about. Positive energy is contagious. It just, it goes from great leaders, great to the staff, the staff to the students, the parent population. It's incredible. And that's what it's all about. So we're going to make the mistakes and we're going to have our differences. But I wish to always support this budget here tonight. I don't think we could pass this budget here tonight unfortunately, because you need a majority of five votes, of the majority of the Elizabeth School Board, to pass the budget. They don't believe we have those five votes here tonight. And that's unfortunate. I believe we're going to have to probably come back next Tuesday and do this again and try again. But I hope again that everyone understands what's at stake, as Mr. Chiara has said. And, you know, it's difficult, it's difficult when you have a difficult budget. But he said for what you get in this city, as Joe Cortijo ultimately said, we have a lot at stake. Now, I've been walking door to door the last couple of weeks for another campaign. And what's interesting is I just walked last week in the town of Union. And I was up on Liberty Avenue in a really nice neighborhood. And I knocked on a door of a nice young couple who told me, and I don't know what I did, and they had read something about me being bottom of Elizabeth School Board, that they were just overwhelmed and told me that they had just listed their house in Union. In Union, they had just listed their house because they were moving to Elizabeth. They were moving to Elizabeth. And I asked them why. They're moving to Elizabeth because his sister, the young man's sister, lives in Elizabeth. And this niece is attending the public academy. And they are so elated that their daughter is going to have that same opportunity. They don't have the confidence in the Union school system. So they're moving from Union to Elizabeth. Imagine that, if this was even possible 20 years ago, or even imagine that. Then to, the last time I was over with Bayway Section, the second ward of the city, on Grove Street, met another young couple. And again, they knew they were leaving in the school board and they moved here from Brooklyn, from Brooklyn. They couldn't stop talking and praising the Elizabeth school system. When they were looking for places all were to move, they decided to move here to Elizabeth because they knew how great the school system was. And all that goes really to the heart of the matter. They knew what the taxes were in Elizabeth. The folks in Union know what the taxes are in Elizabeth. But they're choosing to move here because of our school system. And it wasn't too long ago that people were fleeing the city of Elizabeth. So you could disagree on a lot of things. You could hate, you know, certain things. But you can't run from the facts. Number one urban school district in the state, three national blue ribbon schools here in the state. Possibly, as our superintendent said, maybe one more on the right. There's no other city in the state that hadn't worked, national blue ribbon schools. And all the accolades and all the achievements that the superintendent talked about here today are so many. And so many. And we should be proud as a city. And if you imagine the possibility, if we could really stop all the nonsense that goes on between what happens in City Hall and the taxing of the Board of Education, maybe it's violent, maybe it's offensive. And we could get through that. We could get through that if we could work together. Everyone knows, everyone wants that. The city deserves that. We deserve better. We deserve better. We have to stop the nonsense. We have to stop the personal attacks, the, everything that goes on. We will walk out of this meeting and there won't be seconds after we walk out that members of our city will be tweeting a lot of things about what took place here at the board tonight. They'll be tweeting how this budget shouldn't pass and how it's a disgrace. You get through that. You get through that. Some people, you won't change their perspective or their opinions of the city. But I have faith that people will do the right thing. This team here tonight continues to do the right thing and they deserve better. Our staff deserves better, our teachers, our security, our students, and our students and our children of the city deserve better. I will wholeheartedly support this budget. And I'm going to ask all my colleagues to do the same. As the superintendent said, we're going to hire many, many more new teachers. We have a enrollment that's exploding in the city of Elizabeth. And enrollment nets now over 27,000, a projected increase of another 1,000 students. In the year 2000, we were at 20,000 students. We're now at only 7,000 students. So twist of Cortijo's point, what does that say? People want to invest in the public school system. They want to invest. And there are those who are going to be negative. There are those who just want to tear you down. They want to knock you down. Well, I experienced that as a child, when I was a child. There are those kids that will try to just knock you down and tear you down. And you go through it. You have to believe in yourself and you have to believe in what you're doing is bigger and the cause is bigger. So I want to thank you again, superintendent. I want to thank my colleagues on the board. I know my colleagues on the board are going to do the right thing. I think we're going to have unanimous vote on this budget. It would be really, really disheartening to many of the teachers in the city. I think to the students in the city, if they don't vote on this budget, I think it would be incredibly shame. So superintendent, thank you. Madam President, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We have made progress in the city. And I too love my school and I appreciate our teachers, our staff, our superintendent. I've seen Mr. Meekl, I've seen Mr. Connes, I've seen Mr. Ojeda. I know we have good schools. But we cannot sit back and not address the issue that we have in hand. I was elected to do a job and I can't sit here and say, well, this is good enough. It's not good enough. I cannot sit here and vote for a budget that is cutting back on our police, that is still not cutting back on our lawyers. Still today, we have a private attorney sitting here tonight getting paid for absolutely no reason. I cannot support a budget that is allowing a company to come in here, source for teachers, and privatizing and controlling people who are teaching our students. And I still have not seen any information about this company. I apologize, but you deserve better. You all deserve better. And I was voted to make sure it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I did want to thank Mr. Chiara from the Education Law Center.
The underdog.
He truly is a champion for education. Him along with the Education Law Center really does fight for every single dollar, not just for this district, but for all districts. He does hold, like he was saying, the governor, the current governor, the legislator, the board of commissioners accountable for not fully funding the S F R A, the school funding format, which damages many school districts, including ours. One thing also that I had asked, you know, over the years, we have been underfunding our own school system for many reasons. And that's also damaging. And it's something that we're going to have to deal with this year and for many years on. I do want to thank the superintendent, Mr. Kennedy, Dr. Green, the Finance Committee. They pretty much work on this budget all year long. And there are very few months where they don't really have to think about or talk about, you know, the next school year. So we appreciate it. I know everyone says they appreciate it, but I can't even imagine the amount of stress and the hours that go into thinking about this insurance 24/7, all of that, everything else that you have to serve. So thank you. A lot of the success, I know we can talk about the success of our districts. And all that praise needs to go to the teachers, to the support staff, the professionals, the initiators, food service workers, security guards, custodial staff. There's people who come in here every single day and make sure that our kids succeed. Whether they're serving them lunch, teaching them, making sure that they get what they need. Sometimes they don't get it at home, many times they don't get it at home. So they come to school and we take care of them. So they deserve all the praise. It's nice to have, to know that this week was teacher appreciation week. But we do appreciate what we do and we know that what we do matters. So thank you for that. This budget is tough. I know Dr. Green's presentation, well, actually before I continue, sorry to... The presentation, once again, one thing that we do not like, and we continue to say is when the city budget is compared to the Board of Education budget. Like our colleague Stan Monram, who says comparing apples to oranges. You know, when you break down the tax, or how much tax can you spend in dates, you know, the city services 124,000 people and the Board of Education, we service about 26,000. You write it down, I can give you a number, but just per student, a school spends 2,200 dollars of taxpayer money and the city only spends 1,100 dollars. So you can see that if you want to compare apples to oranges, it's not very comparable. For this budget, one of my main concerns was that the four of us, and I know it's taken before, Maria, Charlene, and Stan, I don't know if they agree, but the four of us were never included in the process. And my colleagues may say, I know you had the opportunity to have input. And they were right, we had the opportunity five days after it was due to the county superintendent to give what we thought about the budget. At that time, five days after it was due, we did have a meeting with the superintendent, Dr. Green, Mr. Kennedy, which they did stay very late with us to discuss many options. I know Mrs. Huber Meyer and Dr. Green and Mr. Kennedy, we put, I put out a proposal that I thought was better. Whether you agreed or not, it didn't come to fruition. And my colleague said, Maria, there's a better way. If we were asked, if we were made to be a part of this budget, you know, maybe we could work together. But we were never, never made a part of this, never. You know, they'll say, oh, we were here, we were available. True, but that's active fact. We'd like to be available, you know, we'd like to be included at the beginning. It's just another, another step into how we are locked out by the majority members. We're stymied, we're not allowed to help, to put in work. We're here, we're dying to help, we're dying to get our hands dirty, to get into the committee, to give our ideas. We're not allowed to. I'm not sure if you know or not, I'm a special education teacher. And in a couple of weeks, I'm about to graduate my master's in special education, yet I was removed from a special education degree. I think that's proof enough that we get locked up. We try to help. Majority members, this is your budget. One of your members is not here today and he wants to pass your budget because we have not been doing it. I don't feel like I've been a part of this, no matter what you say. I don't feel that I've been a part of this. I know the administration, the central office, that's tried to reach out to us and meet, but... Once, you know, again, the first time I remember asking to meet was five days after it was due to the county superintendent. Along with some other issues, along with this major issue, some of the other issues I have is that all our police officers are going to be cut from the high schools. This day and age with security the way it is, said that the school should become the most commonplace. I think that's a very dangerous cut, but that's, again, that's, you know, no cut is easy. Let me just tell you that. Like me, almost nitpicking these little things, I don't want to be disrespectful if it may sound that way. But I know there's nothing easy when you have to cut. But to me, that's something that's unacceptable, but I'm only one of nine. Also, I know the superintendent said we were hiring 36 teachers. I know there's also going to be a staff reduction of some sort. Overall, we're only beginning to new teachers from last year, from the addition of attraction. To me, that's an issue, but again, we do what we can with the money. But I mean, I could talk for hours in terms of what I think, but I've never been asked to, to give my opinion, again, until it's too late. So I'm going to spare the public that. If the budget were to not pass, I would hope the majority members reach out and ask you, what, you know, what would I like to see? What would you like to do? I hope they reach out before Tuesday. The Finance Committee, I would love to meet with you. And I really hope, I really hope that they reach out. I'm glad that the next meeting is only a few days away. So maybe we can correct this now. Thank you.
Madam President, I think the superintendent should clarify at the point entirely at some of Mr. Arby's points, this is not the board's budget. The superintendent presented the budget. Also regarding the point of the next two teachers, the people that support teachers, so the superintendent, this is not a lot of this information is given there that the commissioner also said that they never had any chances to meet with the superintendent. I think you made it very clear to all of us, your office was open, so...
With regard to the budget process, it is absolutely correct. It is a year-round process. We started in the early fall. We made ourselves available to all board members to be able to have those conversations. We made ourselves available to all board members to be able to have those conversations that are critical for the future of the organization. So in terms of availability, we have made ourselves available. We have scheduled several meetings to have board members come together to meet with the institution and review what it is that we are projecting for the fall school year to review, or needs assessments are showing us to be able to sit and discuss our common goals for the organization. In terms of teachers, we will be hiring 36 new teachers. I stated in my presentation, part of the process of the development of this budget, just as I indicated, there was a reallocation of funds so that we could become board, set an additional group of teachers. The same is with the 36 teachers. That was the need. We had to ensure that those positions were included in the budget. Now, in order to be able to fund those 36 positions, we did reallocate, and I did state that in my presentation, from within, in order to ensure we were opening up the new classrooms and providing the support services necessary. With regard to the budget, and I'm going to turn to Madam President, with regard to if my understanding is correct, I believe that today is the last day in order to make recommendations for changes to the budget. The board meeting on Tuesday would be to take the vote, but the time period from May 8th to May 12th does not include the opportunity to propose changes.
That's correct, but today is the last day of making changes to the budget. And that's purpose of the public hearing, see.
Any other comments?
I too would like to thank the superintendent for her presentation. It was very informative. I've sat through several of these now, and that was probably one of the most detailed ones I've sat through. And I appreciate it because I know there's been a lot of questions. And even some of the questions that were asked here in their public speaking were actually answered during that presentation, which I thought was great that you were able to anticipate some of the questions that the public may ask. In reference to public speaking, I was here and I was a member of the board when we adopted the term policy. And the idea behind the policy was to assure that the public had enough to speak, that they spoke about educational issues, not to make it a public spectacle or show that they had respect, that the respect would be mutual, the board to the public and the public to the board. I am the first one to say that I agree that every citizen has the right to speak their mind, they should address their elected officials in public. I encourage, this room should be full today, there should be more people here. The public should be here. Unfortunately, I'm in this room with budgets passed and there were a lot less people, so this is an improvement. Okay, I passed budgets, no, absolutely no one came to speak. And there was little or no interest in what was going on, which is very sad. The Education Law Center has been a big advocate on our behalf and a very important partner. I believe every year we adopt to donate $1 per student to the work they do. We've asked over the last couple of years for the city to match those funds. As we talk about services, Mr. Rodriguez said, we service the children, so one of the city's children as well. Unfortunately, I don't believe they've ever adopted that resolution and done the same, but that money can go a long way for the hard work. And we made it a very small investment at big return on what we've been able to invest over the years that they, as Mr.... Sorry, the name escapes me, it's a bit long now. As you mentioned, we were able to recuperate a lot of the money that was held from us over the years to the lawsuit network. And to that money, I remember we did a lot of capital net group, especially for the older buildings, but made it a lot easier to educate our children and made it safer for our staff and a lot better overall. And we were very passionate to be able to receive that money because for a long time we were hurting for it. And I remember the boiler at School 15 ringing now, I remember Edison Tech sinking literally, and a lot of this stuff, I'm able to, to be able to repair it because of the funds recuperated and the work done through the... I am really concerned with the tone that these meetings have taken. I believe there's a small group who pretends to represent a larger group. And I've said this before, I am grateful that my children are healthy and that they never had to have the challenges of having special needs or anything of that sort. I think that it is shameful to take and to prod into the hurt and the pain that those parents feel, the frustration, and try to stir it up for political reasons. I support advocacy, yes. You're really for your children and you want, you feel that we want to provide a service. You have every right to make those comments and you come here to advocate, I support you. I've offered my help. Okay, unfortunately, please, I'm speaking now, okay? It's my turn to speak. It's my, I won't let you bully me. See, you can bully everybody else here, you can't bully me. It's my turn to speak, okay? It's my turn to speak. And you represent a very small group and you're sitting with them right now. That's the only group you represent. You don't represent any parents. Your organization doesn't exist. It doesn't exist.
Mayor, you're not able to control yourself knowing you have to call security at this point. Please let the board members complete their comments. Will you please, will you please behave?
This is exactly what's wrong, this is exactly why the policy is...
Okay, and our next, our recourse then is to get security involved. We will not have a meeting to generate to level what you're doing. We have a board member who's trying to greet his colleagues.
Trying to attack parents, trying to complete their comments and you're going to allow that?
There was an opportunity for the taxpayers to say what they had to say, but we listened to them. Okay, what happens here is this, this is exactly what's going on. When you don't want to hear something, okay, there are rules to how this meeting is conducted. And that is with mutual respect. And that's the reason why we have the policy in place. We want everybody to have an opportunity to speak, but there's no need to attack each other or be critical. I have a right to my opinion. I've been elected to this seat three times by the citizens of this city. I'm sure they want to hear what I have to say. In any event, my concern remains, is this level of disrespect for the board and the work that the superintendent is doing? And this misrepresentation that we are not providing a service especially for special ed children throughout the district? I think it's shameful that we are cutting trips to small children and leaving them behind. That is just, isn't true. That isn't true. I talk to parents every day and I deal with many of their concerns. And these are not concerns that are being brought up because they don't exist. They're making them up and they want the public, and they're playing with the cameras, to believe that this is reality, and it isn't, and it's shameful. If the concerns are legitimate, I've never, I've never seen the superintendent not address them. Usually, things are taken care of at school, but we have great principals, we have excellent staff throughout the district who really care for their children. So I just, this is my personal opinion, I can't speak to the board, it's disheartening that these things continue to happen. Something has to change because there is a policy in place. And I believe that the policy was passed by the previous board. It is on, it is the rules and regulations about how we operate the meetings and they need to be respected. I don't want to sit here and come back and go back and forth and getting into a yelling contest with a small group of people who just are protected, just doing that, disrupting the meeting and disrespecting everyone. This is a very important budget that they all have. Some of them are difficult, and this was extremely difficult. Because we have to, like the vice president of the EEA said, no one wants to lose services. We don't want to lose services. I have children in the district, I don't want to lose services, I want a home. I don't want to lose service, I want to make sure that when I call the police, they're not so busy handling something else or they can't come behind. Because at that point, my need is just as important as anyone else's. I want my services. If I call the fire department, I want the fire department show up. I call ambulance, I don't want the fire department show up, I want ambulance. This is what's going on. So I don't want to cut services because I've already seen what cut services are. I don't want to lay people off. I've done that, I've sadly had to cut, the budget, we had to lay people off. It took a long time, the hire went all back. And I know many of them, and it's very hard. It's very difficult when you have a reduction in force because you know it's going to impact the children directly in the classroom. And then these folks, working people who have families, children of their own, mortgages, college loans, and everything else that goes, living in this great country. So they're very difficult decisions. I had ample time to be part of the process, quite frankly, I felt that I wasn't part of the process. You would have heard it, you wouldn't have heard it tonight, you would have heard it several months ago, you would have been hearing that I wasn't part of the process. I was part of the process, I'm very happy that I was. I understand the budget well. I think, I think it really, it really covers a lot of, a lot of, a lot of stuff. And we can't sit here and say that the city budget, the Elizabeth School Board budget, don't have something to do with each other. They do. Because the taxpayer, at the end of the day, is the one that's burdened with the pain and the tax. And what we've had, okay, is we've had the difficult job of balancing a great educational system with parity, which is most important. Parity is a very key word here because when we pay our teachers, okay, we needed to make sure they were paying well to want to work in Elizabeth. Because as Mr. Montero said, for a long time, people were leaving. And we weren't being able to hire in the past, we weren't able to recruit, we weren't a good-paying district. And people didn't want to work, it was a tough place to work. And we were able to start paying better and become competitive. And now, we don't have a problem hiring new teachers. There is a, we attract a lot of talented people who could probably work somewhere else but have decided to work here. They want to work here. And that's, that's a testament to the superintendent has not, I can say, has not, because she was here as the assistant superintendent before, so she's been involved turning around this ship for a long time, so she deserves a lot of the credit. As Mr. Munoz has no longer with us, it was very difficult and these choices have to be made. This is what happens. We don't raise taxes because we're afraid to cross the taxpayer. We don't want people to leave. We want people to be able to afford the homes they're buying. We want them to buy homes here, we want them to choose Elizabeth because it's good for the economy. And then what we have is, we have a city administration who has their own costs and their own reason to raise taxes. What really bothers me is when they gave away all the tax breaks to the corporations, the large corporations like IPF, like the home. Recently, I know city council is in talks of giving another tax break to a, I believe it's a food town, where they're going to build up the old Daffy Dance property. That's going to be another 20-year payment that I'm going to be paying taxes to the city of Elizabeth, this is revenue that we're going to be making. We're giving away our city to developers. In the meantime, it's costing us money. So it makes it very, very difficult not to say that it's intertwined, one side...
Can somebody tell me, I'm over here texting?
If you do not come out, I'm going to call the police or you're going to be arrested.
Speak into the mic, please, Madam President. Because I can't hear you clearly, he's trying to speak. You want to kick me out? Let's try this, Madam President. You want to kick me out? Come on, Madam President. I'm trying to listen to Mr. Tridio.
She has not said anything. Not a word. Can you tell me what I'm saying? I'm reading what I'm writing. I have not said anything.
Since he came up to me before, nobody has said anything.
The only, the only reason people don't want to be here is they want to listen to what I have to say. They want to listen to what I have to say, maybe you should just leave. I mean, that's all, if you want to listen, you can't listen to what I have to say if you're talking. So, you know, there's only two reasons to be here, if you want to listen to what I have to say.
We were listening to every word you were saying. Every single word.
Are these morning going to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Tridio, second by Commissioner Castillo, Kenny Clonk.
She's not going anywhere here.
My God, please.
Madam President, before we adjourn, Madam President, I just want to...
Not going to listen to you either, Tony.
I want to say... With the EEA members that are here tonight, I hope all of you understand the importance of this next meeting on Tuesday. This meeting, this budget is not being voted on tonight. Livelihood, the progress of this school district is at stake. All that has been accomplished over the 10 years is now at stake come Tuesday. I hope that message is to be to all members, to the staff, everyone in every school district, that this room is packed on Tuesday night. If it is clear by what is said here tonight, this will not happen. The five votes necessary, unless the support is here in this room come Tuesday. So we need to pack this room because a lot is at stake come Tuesday night. The progress of this district is at stake, and this is what it's at stake about, to disrupt the meeting, and it won't happen.
I'm so glad.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to...
My God, please.
Was there comments?
If one speaks, why can't you all make comments?
Mr. local?
She has not said a word, Jeffrey. She has not said a word. She has not said a word.
Montero.
Yes.
They're voting to leave, they're voting to leave. That's it, just stop.
The meeting ends. Motion to adjourn. No.
What? I'll leave from the meeting is over. I didn't say a word. She just said... I don't have to. She didn't do anything. I didn't do anything. It's over now, we can say. Now we can get up and leave. No, now I want to say finish my school. I was interrupted. I hope you read this political statement on Elizabeth's letterhead out loud. That ought to be a good one for the new street. So it's Tuesday, it's Tuesday with bells and whistles, you know? We like to use political propaganda. They answer emails, Volga hasn't answered it yet. Though I think they're constantly chasing her for three months for a meeting about special needs. She won't do it. I want to see if Volga Hugo Meyer will answer my question about immigration. You think they got something to hide? $500,000 ID money gets rolled over two years ago. Can't explain where it's going. Recording or something? I listened to Mama uploaded on the wire.
It's your buddy? It sounds like your buddy.
No, we didn't get a lot of it.
So we're lying. But his son was almost down syndrome, but we're lying. Because he was almost special needs, you know, so almost counts. Although me and you don't clock. We don't, we don't clock out. We weren't get, we weren't here with almost, we got it. But his is almost, so we're lying. Does the district provide services? How dare me? That's why they copy paste my information from my... They're too lazy to do the work. Oh, let's hide.